Let's get this thing over.
What am I doing tomorrow?
You can turn it first. It's unfair, I think.
Okay. Good. Call the July 26th proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 millage rate setting meeting to order. Blanche, wanna lead us off?
Good evening. So before you tonight, we're here to basically set the proposed millage rate for FY23-24 budget. The request will be, and I'm gonna give you a PowerPoint presentation, is to set the rollback millage rate for '23 tax year at 3.6691, to move to set the proposed operating millage rate for '23 tax year at the 4.1876, and to move to set in place the public hearing, intended public hearing for fiscal year 2023-2024 as Wednesday, September 6, 2023, at 5:15 PM in the City Hall Council chambers. So I want to give you a quick overview of some of the highlights in the general fund. In regards to the revenue, our ad valorem taxes have increased, reflecting a 16.15% increase due to the growth that we have, as everyone knows, the building permits are going up, so we're reflecting a 140% increase in that. Plan analysis fees, same reason, 2.5 million dollar increase, 255% increase. Reinspection fees, and again, I want to say now, you know, we were coming out of COVID. When you're going into '22 and '23, you didn't really know what your growth was gonna rebound to, so we're kind of chewing up everything at this point in time based on what we have coming in for FY23. Again, the reinspection fees, $128,000 increase, that's, we got a fee increase on that, so it's going up about 640%. State revenue sharing, 19.27%, local sales tax, a million, 1.2 million, that's 13.84%. Lean search fees, looking at an increase there, and that's going up 100K, 43.14%. Some special event and activities and events for the amphitheater, increasing that from 30 to 60,000 per year. And again, here's the interest on investments. Yes, we are increasing there. We are realizing basically that amount for '23, so we're reflecting the increase in '24 about 1.2.
Before you go any farther, let me, this is kind of just an interesting fact. I was looking at the, the, the ad valorem, so which is based on the assessed value versus the property value, and because of Save Our Home and even, you know, you have a Save Commercial business, you know, 10% max increases on commercial and the 3% Save Our Home, our assessed value to the property value is only 63%. So if, if, so we're, we're getting, I think we're, our assessed value is $6 billion.
Yes, about, mhm.
So if you take, basically, we probably got right at almost $10 billion in property value, but because of the Save Our Homes and Save, you know, all those, and homestead exemptions, that's what, that's the percentage that we're getting taxed on.
Okay. So in regards to the general fund expenditures, in the information that you have, we have about 82 million, in total, it's 85. Remember I said I set aside some funds for salary adjustments, some of those salary changes that we want to make? That's about 2.8 million at this time. So our balanced budget of about 85 million. And during the discussions, we did have some conversations about adding the additional fire captain, and I think adding 125K for training, and for that Bay Ridge Cemetery clearing, 75,000. And we're backing out that point-to-point tower system that Rob had. He said he didn't need, he wants to kill me, by the way, but anyway, it's being backed out. And we're adding, you know, the travel that was inadvertently not put back in for the mayor and for the clerk, so that's 12.5. So that brings us to 85, too. But at the 85,5, I just wanted to share with you, 85,022,233, our 25% threshold target for our reserves is that 21.255. Even adding and making those other reductions, we're still, it only takes it up to 21.3. Okay?
Go, go back. I thought that we also added another position to IT.
No, we, we didn't.
ADA, the ADA focus.
We're, we're gonna try to.
They do something through '23, right, Mayor? Is what you said?
Mayor, Commissioners, and I talked to Commissioner Nesta earlier. I'm working with the IT, the IT department and the GIS side to do some standards that plan. Part of that, what my plan is, is the developers, when they submit that, will have to do the necessary ADA tagging, so we'll come back to you with an ordinance and with the standards manual for submitting all of that information, and we'll, we'll make that inclusive there and see if we can't resolve the tagging that needs to be achieved for the ADA compliance and see where we get with that, if that's acceptable to y'all. I think, you know, when you look at those PDFs, that should be on the developer to provide us with all the necessary information to meet that requirement.
All right, and then we would need the additional staff to do that.
With hopes that you don't need that additional person.
Well, I guess the, the only concern to that point is that we would just need to double check, somebody needs to quality control this, so.
It will, and, and that's, that's part of why I'm trying to back out, so I don't have GIS people over there that have to re-put in all the pipelines and all that stuff that they're doing now, and that's, that's why I wanted standards manual to be developed, so we're, we're putting that back on the developer to submit what needs to come into us in an electronic format.
Okay, that, and let's just, we'll touch and, it'll be touch and go to make sure that's been.
Yeah, let's, let's see how it goes, that's where I'm at.
All right.
Okay, all righty. So in regards to, I mentioned earlier that we're using approximately 8 million to balance this budget in reserves, and that is coming out of our capital reserves, as I've mentioned before. These are, and we are allowed to use those assigned reserves for major capital purchases and in accordance with our reserve policy. And these are the items that are included in FY24 budget requests that we have assigned to those reserves, the fire truck, the radio system for police and fire. Again, I'd mentioned that we increased the, they had transferred the streets fund for sidewalks and paving, LED lights, I think that was brought up for recreation, police vehicles for the 10 new officers that he will be getting, some facility capital equipment, fire replacement, the fire department, their replacement staff vehicles, and the miscellaneous fire equipment for that 92. So that's how we are assigning that 8,114,779.
So how much do we have left in the capital reserves? Am I getting ahead of you, sorry?
I am getting to that. So I just wanted to show you how it works a little bit, and you'll see it right there, it's that 1.2 million dollars to answer your question. These are the audited general fund balance, assigned and unassigned reserve amounts. In regards to culture and recreation, 755. Capital projects, we assign 13.2, and insurance, about 500K. In regards to the unassigned, we're at 24.9. The unassigned is where we target that 25%. So remember I mentioned before, because of, I used the budget for our '23 budget and then the amendment to factor in where we stand. So in regards to the general fund, that was balanced with the use of reserves, about 2.5, 2.6 million. Thus far, we've had about 1.1 in budget amendments for that, for the general fund account, leaving a balance of 21.233089, so that we are within that target of 25%. So in the balances for the cultural and recreation, the 755K capital projects, we still have about 1.3 in insurance, another 3.00, 310,000. If you can recall, when I came to you last month and said I needed to do a budget amendment for this 21 insurance fee that we had no clue about, and they came back and back billed us, that was that 189,000 there. So we do have adequate reserves, you know.
How are capital projects that fund, how is that funded?
It's, it's through your reserves, when we come back at the end of the year, if you know that we, you know, you anticipate a lot of, you know, it's management. If you anticipate a lot of improvements coming through, we can take some of those unassigned reserves, we don't.
Allocate, okay.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
So just to share with you some of the millage and the rollback calculations, the Mayor was mentioning that our tax base is almost 6 billion or 6 million, I mean, numbers, but it's 5.9. And at that 4.18 millage rate, the current millage rate is, what is reflected in our budget is the 23.7 million. We're looking at, from our tax base, a 16.2% increase over the FY23 tax base, and if at the rollback rate, of course, that'd decrease our tax revenue about 2.7, but adding .1 to the millage rate, we're looking at, at the, maintain the current rate, you see where that stands, that's that 16.2% increase. Adding one, a .1 to the mill, we get, looking at additional revenue of 565, and .25, and .5 in one mill. That's what we're looking at. However, in regards to, we are proposing, basically, the, to stay at the current millage rate, at the 4.1876, that's what we use to balance the budget. And of course, that rollback, rollback rate is the 3.6691. I've submitted the DR420 forms to the Department of Revenue, and they have certified those forms.
Yeah, and the rollback rate means that's the rate to give you the exact same amount as last year for property taxes.
Any questions?
So who made the recommendation to leave the millage rate as is?
That's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so.
For consideration.
We did all of this with the millage rate that we currently have.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you flip back that to show the increases?
Rob, is he here to help? I'm trying to go back to my.
Like that?
But yeah, but. Go too fast, but anyway. There we are.
Commissioner Blaspois, too, if you look on, on your iPad, it's, that's posted at the bottom of the stories dot open.gov that we've been looking at for the general fund description, scroll all the way down, it's, it's a little bit bigger and you can zoom in on what you need to as well.
Wait a minute. Open that go.
So go to, and you go to tonight's budget workshop day three.
Okay, there it is, wait a minute.
She blew it up on her iPad, I think.
And then budget overview.
Where can I see this?
And just so you know, I, I shared over the break some, some details with Commissioner Becker, you know, how this works, and I think he has a better understanding. And keep in mind, we are projecting excess, where you saw me back out that 2.5, that will probably end up being a different increase as well. So our, these reserve balances would get even better, that will allow us to reassign some more funds for FY25 for capital needs as well, as, as well as build our reserves. So at this point, we are doing okay, we're doing pretty good for the general fund, that's why we are proposing the 4.18.
Any other questions for Blanche?
Walk me through what you just said again about the 2.5.
Let me go back. God, this thing. See down below, under the unassigned? That was the planned use of reserves in balancing FY23 budget.
Okay.
As you know, we're projecting an increase, not a deficit. Okay? So that increase will increase this amount instead of reduce that amount, that'll give us more funds that we can allocate, again, some up here. Yes, and have, we got a lot of savings, in other words. As you heard, the police chief, he talked about his savings, that's where that goes.
Gotcha, okay, understood, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not, I want to have Andrew kind of.
Oh, yes, we have the attorney here.
I tell you, it's, it's a very precise, and obviously, this is Blanche's first time at this, you know, this, this is, Edward had this on the back of his, you know, hand, and we, we don't. So Andrew, appreciate you coming out tonight.
My pleasure, Mayor, thank you. Essentially, what the City Council is doing tonight, the City Commission, is, is certifying the Department of Revenue 420 forms. What you are looking at, and I've seen these numbers here, of course, the current year proposed millage rate is 4.1876, keeping the, the millage rate the same. Some of the calculations that I can go over very quickly, your current rollback rate, 3.6691, as you've seen, that's also calculated, what, what Chapter 205 requires municipalities to do is, is take that rollback rate and adjust it to create a maximum millage levy calculation. So taking that into account and working through the sheet, looking at last year's taxable values and following the rules there for the form that takes the rollback rate and ups it to 4.0117 for terms of calculation. There's a limit under Chapter 205 as to, it basically comes into your voting requirements this evening, and to the amount of millage that, there's a, there are set numbers that require a certain amount of votes for this proposed millage to ultimately get you to the next stage of the tentative bill, millage stage, pardon me, at the tentative budget hearing, pardon me. So what Florida requires you to do is then adjust, put it this way, simple majority vote, the maximum millage tonight that can be adopted by three Commissioners is 4.1256, because you look at that adjusted millage rate and you're adding on 110% to that, but you have to adjust it for Florida personal income, so it's all been done by DOR, and that number comes out to that 4.1256. So if you're gonna go above that, you, there's also similar adjustment that takes you to 4.5382. So tonight, if you're going to adopt a proposed millage rate between those two numbers, 4.1256, above that number, as been, has been proposed, but below 4.5382 or up to and including that number, then it'll take four votes, and anything above that, millage rate is going to be set above 4.5, which hasn't been discussed at all, that, of course, would take unanimous vote, if that's helpful. And if there's anything specific you need me to address, then I can do that as well.
I'm confused, a vote for, you said 4.1256, that's below our current millage rate.
Correct, correct. So that is the highest number that three of you could tonight agree on. If you go above that number, it takes four, four affirmative votes.
That's what I'm reconciling, because it's lower than the number that we're currently.
It is, and it's, it's lower, and that's because of the adjusted rollback rate, which kicks it up to 4.0117. And then you have the adjustment for.
Okay, so the calculation is off of the rollback rate, not the current rate?
It's, everything is tagged to the original rollback rate and then to the adjusted rollback rate.
But rollback nonetheless, not.
But rollback nonetheless, exactly.
So in the eyes of that calculation, 4.1256 is an increase.
Right.
Got it, got it.
Okay. Any thoughts, any?
Well, I mean, the, my, my first thoughts were, you know, obviously, I, I still think there's some sharpening of the pencil that needs to be done in terms of the budget, I think there's still some positions, I think we can have spirited conversations that still need to be added to the budget. However, you know, even with the additions that you, you quantified up there, I think if you assume 85 million-ish in terms of general fund, on the, on the revised, restated number with the additions from the past couple days, that's just shy of 25%, 24.7, I think.
Yes.
So even if, even if we add some other personnel that we all feel is needed before the time that we, we finalize budget, I think there's some room there, because, again, even if you use some of those funds, you deepen, deepen that, we, I don't think that we would be in jeopardy of going below 23%, maybe even not even below 24%. I think our reserve policy just indicates that if you.
It's a target.
Below the 25, you just have to have, you have to purposely try to march towards getting back to that number.
And I think what we anticipating to end up with in the positive for '23 can help replenish that as well.
Yeah, I think that would be well worth doing, making sure that that's back to where that 25% mark, and then we can move forward.
Because we got another, at least another month.
Yeah, a couple of more months, we're in July.
To trend toward, see where we're closer to.
But what, and this has happened in the past, right? People will look at this, these proceedings today, and they assume, oh, you didn't talk about this thing or that thing.
It's final, yeah.
It's final and budget's pencils down, we're not pencils down yet.
Right.
But I, I believe that we've got enough fluff there to be able to do some additional things without jeopardizing the reserve policy and things like that now, you know, I still. Yeah, I, I'll tell you one mine, I'll yield and listen to others, but.
The thing I, I wanted to ask you is that, once we set the millage rate based on the tax base that we have, and looking at the growth that we're experiencing, that will not increase.
This is certified.
That's, that's November 1st, it's.
Wow.
It's, it's over, it's not going up, won't go up till next November.
Say that again, what?
Say that again.
The rate is set, there won't, it won't go up.
He's, the tax base.
The tax, yes, the tax rate won't go up.
The military?
No, he's saying.
The tax is.
The assessed value that we can make money on.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Attack, yeah.
That's, that's an annual number, and it's just, that's.
It locks in, yeah.
It's locked in.
So I think the point or the question is, if we add 100 units per month, it doesn't change, doesn't help you, yeah.
Yes.
Not till next year.
Yeah.
And, but my, the point is, at the 4.18, again, I mean, even if we go to the 4.53, that can generate maybe 1.9 million, but I think we have adequate funds, you know, in our reserves, and we're anticipating the excess, and out of FY23, we're already looking at increasing fees to, you know, the water fees, sanitation fees, and different things like that with the '24 budget.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, we're talking about a budget for this year, it's short-sighted and laser-focused on this year, but we've also got to contemplate what's gonna happen in future years.
Correct.
Again, the first inclination, anytime you do a budget workshop, or like a salary study, or rates and fees, structures and things like that, you always benchmark yourself against other municipalities. And again, a pocket's always been the lowest, I get that, and it's something, some people hang their hats on, and great for them, but at the same time, there's still a lot of need for our city long-term, and the, the unknown is, you know, what, what property valuations are gonna do, or things like that, or, case in point, the reserve policy, we're using monies out of reserves, are we always gonna be chasing our tails in, in terms of that, or else do we have a proper millage rate that's gonna allow us to allocate and, you know, put some funds back into reserve if we do go under our current policy restrictions? So I think we also have to contemplate the future and what that rate should look like. You don't have a view, in the past, we've always kind of looked at how we stack up against other municipalities, you don't have that view, do you?
Not at this time, no, I don't. I know Baitland is much higher.
No, yeah, there's other places, I mean, Sanford is much higher, Orlando is much higher.
Yeah, but no.
So, and, and so just to kind of bounce off some of your comments there, obviously, we do want to plan for the future, the problem is, we have, just in what we discussed tonight, there's a lot that needs to still be compiled to create that plan, so it's hard for us to say, let's make sure we're at X point, because I don't know what, is it X plus Y or is it X minus Y, once we actually get there, once we get the plans in place? So the biggest thing, I think, moving forward this year should be focused on creating those long-term plans in each department, making sure we understand the needs, where we're growing to, and, and how we're gonna fund that properly.
But, but that's gonna, I mean, that's gotta become the DNA of this, of this, of this city hall. I mean, again, we've got to have, there's, there's things that we discussed over the last three days, that it's not the first time that these have been brought up, right? It's, you know, what does our strategic plan look like? What is our fleet, uh, uh, scheduled? What does our fleet schedule look like? Because again, it should be, it, it should almost go like reserve style funding of these things. Hey, I know, like we were talking about with the lift stations, I know that I'm going to have to do, you know, two to eight of them per year, and I know that my average cost is going to be this. Okay, this should be, we wake up and we automatically shovel that amount into that fund every single year. And it creates this process, it depains this process.
Well, that'd be the new base of everything we look at every year.
But that's, that's really what has to be the commitment of, of staff to do that.
Yes.
But, and I see your point. I mean, you want to have assurances there, else we're just saying, hey, our, we're saying, hey, raise the millage because we need these things, but yet, we're not getting the same substantiation from staff. A lot of times, we get directors that get up there to your point before, is, they'll, they'll acquiesce to say, oh, I forgot what I, you know, I should be able to get by with what I need. But prove to me, point it out, and let's get it done.
Well, and even someone pointed out that said, we do have these needs, but we're not doing it, and, but they, there wasn't, some of them didn't even have, you know, a dollar amount to it, because it, it takes a little more deeper dive to figure that out. So it's, to, to your point, it, it just, it's a lot, we need to create a new system to make sure that each department has what they need and has a future plan. Everyone needs to have that, that long-term plan, not just that annual plan.
And, and you did say the cushion is there for the rate, for the salary increase, once we get started back, correct?
Yes, we do have some of that. We have about that 2.8, but again, as I mentioned about the anticipated savings, 2.8 million, the anticipated savings that we are projecting for FY '23, we can utilize some of that as well.
So 2.8 built in could be plus?
Could be a plus, yes, sir.
I just feel like we just, it's, every time it comes to the millage rate, we all worry about, you know, we're, how are the, you know, the taxpayers going to feel? Yet, the taxpayers have reached out to us, and, and they say, we're tired of just keeping the lights on and, and kind of piecemealing, you know, infrastructure around the city, or just getting what we need to get by until next year. From what I had heard from the different departments, they have enough to continue the level of service, but nothing extra. If something comes up, they're going to rely on the reserves to try and balance it. I mean, you use the reserves this time around to help balance-
For the general fund, yeah, yes.
Public services, right?
Yes, and, and they used it last year. This is not the first year. But again-
So how, how do we change that, so that they don't have to depend on the reserves to balance their, their budget?
What we're starting with in this budget is, are the increases that I shared with you for the fees, 6% and a 13.5% on the sewer rates. Again, as you just said, we need to go back and look at that rate structure again, so that we can, you know, make some improvements there. It probably should be at a higher level than what that is.
Yeah, but then we're depending on future revenue or future funds to come in. We don't have that right now, but we're depending on that.
Yes, and, and everything that we do, we're depending on, on the future revenue projections that we have.
But if we go up 1 mil, this is the added revenue of five-
And that would take an unanimous vote, if I'm understanding correctly.
And that will take what?
All five of you will have to vote for that.
Oh.
Just to go with the 0.1 mil?
No, I think-
No, the one, I thought she said one.
One mil.
I thought she said one mil.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything over 4.5-
Yeah, I'm sorry. To go to the 4.2876. What did he say?
That would, that would take four votes.
That'll take four votes.
But that's only, I mean, that, what we've got to keep in mind too, though, is, is the state of Florida is going through an insurance crisis too, that we have all not, nobody's immune to that. Insurance has doubled, if not tripled, for a lot of people, and it's, I mean, it's your biggest bill that you probably have on, more than maybe your mortgage on some levels. So it's, it, we've got to be really cognizant of inflation, and then what the state of Florida, we are dealing with as well.
Well, that, that's been, I mean, I think when we came to this, you know, and I, I just want to, big shout out to all the directors, you know, we sat down with each of them and, you know, really worked hard, you know, had them, you know, sharpen their pencils and really make sure that we were covering all the bases we needed to cover. But I also think, to, to Commissioner Nesta's point, is insurance rates have doubled. And, you know, and we could have, if we wanted to go to actuarially sound on sanitation, it'd have been 37% increase, just like that. If we wanted to go to, to the wastewater rates, actuarially sound, it's plus 30, probably 40% there. Water, the same thing. So I didn't want the rate shock, you know, or the, or the increases in all these things with, with, with an economy where obviously, we've lost, you know, real wages. I just didn't think this was the year to, to do things. I mean, I'd love to have another million dollars in streets. I mean, we could spend that in, in, you know, 30 minutes, but I, I just think this was a responsible budget. And I, I'll say that the directors did an amazing job, but I'll, I'll tell you, I, I know it was, it was cumbersome, but I will tell you that our, our finance team worked hours and hours and hours to get the best they could out of a pretty poor software system. And so I, I, I can't commit, or can't say more about how well the staff has, has responded to, you know, a, a pretty tough year. And, and from, from public works to parks and rec, to you, you name it, we, they have really come together. And, and I think as a, as a team, we, we've, we've really kind of all come together and figured out, okay, what's really priority, and, you know, some, there was give and take between each of the departments. So I, I feel, I feel good that this budget, and I think if we've got some, but I will say this, I think if we do have extra money, I'm not sure that the, that we shouldn't go to more, versus having more employees, I think we need to be, I would hold back more for salary improvements. I think, I think we're going to be shocked by some of the numbers that we're out of balance on.
Based on current.
So if you're asking me, if we get more money between now and, you know, September, my, my position would be spend it on salaries. But that's just, that's just me. I just think that's what we're going to find, that we're, we're inadequate on every department.
Yeah, but even if you get the, the salary where it should be, you, you, all you're doing is really bringing an employee up to that salary level, but you're still understaffed. That doesn't change anything.
But we can retain the ones that we have.
Yeah, but the workload is increasing. It doesn't mean because we, we bring that employee up to a salary that would keep them, but you have a workload that's coming in that, that one employee cannot handle.
And, and we've added, what, 28 positions for the general fund? I think that we, and maybe 29 now?
I don't want to eliminate any of the positions that we did.
Oh, they're factored in.
Kind of advocated for, because I feel with the, with the new, with the addition of employees, we will be able to keep the level of service with the growing city.
Those positions are factored into these numbers.
Right.
So they're not eliminated.
But again, and, but to that, to that end, and, and I'm not trying to knock Chief McKinley yesterday, but he used two examples of people that left his organization, neither of them were money driven. They were extenuating circumstances. Our survey, if you believe the validity of people being truly honest with their, their, their feedback, benefits is not the highest dissatisfaction. It's director level interaction. So I, I kind of go with Commissioner Velasquez here. A lot of that is, I think, we have to commit to a certain service level to our residents and our business community and meet that. And that service level means efficiencies and stuff like that, you can't necessarily solve with increased salary. You have to make sure that you're properly structured organizationally. So, but I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm saying that, yeah, any favorability that we have in savings should be committed to whatever the salary status is going to be, because that's an unknown number. But I don't think the additional staff that we've contemplated that's not in your numbers that you have currently are positions that are going to be high, high cost.
And that, again, we can factor that very easily, you saw the impact.
Because the ADA thing, I, I get what Mr. Bavaria is saying, but that's on the receiving end. We still have a lot of work to do internally of posting forums or posting information for our public that are ADA compliant, and the website, and all that sort of stuff. So I still think that there's value there, because again, we talked about before, it's a kind of a shared, shared benefit statement for multiple departments.
But, you know, this is a, this is the tentative budget, and we do have the opportunity to come back and check-
No, no, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, maybe I got long-winded and got off track there.
Maybe.
But anyways, I've never been shy about my thoughts on the millage again. You know, there's always going to be an external factor that are going to impact each resident within our city, each business that wants to do business here. If we always, you know, said that, that's an excuse for us not to do anything with the millage, we're always going to have an excuse or an out. Where, again, I always go back to the benchmark, and I, I, it pains me every time that we would say, we're, we're the lowest tax rate in full-service city in all of central Florida. But if you have staff members that are saying, okay, I'm feeling the crunch, I'm not getting the equipment, or I'm not getting the training, I'm not getting this, that, and the other.
Well, they're working weekends.
What value are we providing?
And, you know, and you do hear that, I do hear that. You know, I, I know they're working on Saturdays, there's overtime.
Nobody's working overtime, it's, everything is voluntary, 100%.
But they're still working over their hours that-
I know that, but if they're doing it voluntarily, that means they want the money.
That's it, there's a need for it.
It's a need, and it's a more expensive-
Right.
Compensation.
So what do you, what's your suggestion?
Well, again, I, you know, you, you look at the next highest, I think, I think the next highest one is Winter Garden, if I, if memory serves, theirs is four and a half. I don't think that we should have ever reduced it before. We, we reduced it a tenth of a mil, I don't think we should have reduced it. I mean, we, we saw almost right after that, that, you know, 400K would have gone for good purposes, and that would have been even higher this year because of the percent increase. So I think getting back to a, a number stronger there, because again, we've got to make a commitment that, yeah, insurance is going to have that impact. Recessionary, or, yeah, recessionary pressures are going to have recessionary pressures. But our job is to make sure that our city can run properly and efficiently for our residents. And I have no prob, I've, I've never received an email from anybody saying, Kyle, you're bonkers for having that stance on millage. I get more support than I do people saying, you're crazy. Because again, it all goes back to saying, this is how much it costs, this is how much it requires for our residents and businesses to pay for that service. If that's, if that's problematic, I, I don't know, I, I-
But I guess my, my hindrance there is that it, it's the point that you said, that we need to have a dollar assigned to a subject. We don't have the, we can max this out, I don't have, where we, we, we can always pick somewhere, but right now, in this moment, we don't have that. And until we have set plans for each department to allocate those funds, again, we can find it all day. We're, we're just, we're, we're charging the taxpayer extra for something we're not going to be spending. We're not be spending with a plan.
Yeah, I mean, again, we'd have to go through three more days of workshops to really try to elicit out the true, because again, like, case in point, had we not pressed Chief Willems yesterday to say that he did put forward those two positions, we would have had no way of knowing that they were redlined, right? So how much more of that is under the surface that wasn't brought to light over the last three days?
I mean, if you, to, to, to add to your point, though, i- if you looked at some of these, they, they referenced per an email in May requested to taken out, you can see those tracks. So it, the, to everybody's point here, it's just, if we could have had a kind of macro view to micro, saw the process, how it went down, and then we can choose as a collective body, okay, yeah, that, that, you're right, we don't need this year, or absolutely no, that one, we do need to figure out how we can budget that, but we're not there. And I don't have that information.
It's unfortunate. But, you know, and this goes back to the point too, like, the, you know, Mr. Willems sitting in the back there again, like Camp Weewaw, you know, it's close to gap, that's 800K, that, you know, we committed to saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna try and come as close to possible as funding that camp. That's $800,000. I mean, that's, that's more than the, the, the tenth of a mil.
Correct.
Recovers, I mean, that, that has the same impact. So again, I would argue, again, from a, from a cost perspective, get somebody full-time back into Camp Weewaw, have that expense trigger and try and go chase that 7, 800K to get us back to center.
I mean, that goes to, to economic development as well, I mean, there, there's a lot there to that. I mean, that, all that concept plays on many different levels.
We just need to have the confidence that vision is going to happen, and then it renders this conversation moot.
And, and keep in mind, with the information that I shared with you in regards to the assign, there are dollar amounts available for culture and recreation. I think it's about 750,000 as well. So should we consider that?
Say that again, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't-
That's okay. See the 755,00809?
Yes.
Those are funds that have been set aside for culture and recreation. Again, I, this is, you know, I don't know the details behind it, but it's still like unrestricted, and it's, I think we could probably use it the same way we use those capital funds. So should we decide to do something for Camp Weewaw, those funds?
To upgrade it, or whatever it may be, in addition to what we're already funding to it.
Yes.
So, ready for a motion?
Yes, sir, I am.
Then I move that we set the millage rate at 4.1876.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second?
What, okay, second by Commissioner Nesta, I need to read this, just so we got it all right. "In accordance with the truth and millage trim requirements, the city must set the tentative millage rate and advise the property appraiser of the tentative millage rate, rollback rate, date, time, and place of tentative and final budget hearings. We move to set the proposed operating millage rate of the 2023 tax year at 4.1876 mils." A motion by Commissioner Nesta, a second by Commissioner Smith.
As a reverse, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Nesta making the motion.
No, Commissioner-
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith making the motion, Commissioner Nesta is second. All those in favor?
Commissioner, Commissioner, just a, just a reminder, you do need to take public comment on these motions.
Okay, all right. Public comment. I think we warn them out.
We can't wear them out, they, we're not going to wear them out. Promise you that.
I thought he was asleep.
They still here?
No. I didn't say yes or no.
Well, I know with, with the economy and everything, you know, you want to try to keep everything the way it is. But at some point, customer service, at some point, when it comes down to safety, that's paramount. And like I said before, when you don't know the material condition of your city, that's when stuff stinks, sneaks up on you. Because instead of the guys out there being proactive, they out there being reactive. And I know because I've been there. When you come in, you don't have the time to go out and look at equipment that you should be doing the PMs on, because you're being pulled this way, you're being pulled that way, you get a phone call here, you get a phone call there, and you can go weeks. But here's what's happening with the equipment. It's piling up, it's piling up. And I'm going to just go back to the 160 lift stations, they're not all rent next door. So when you go from one to the other one to the other one, that's manpower, that's time, and you only got eight hours in a, in a, in a workday. And so when you get the staff that's beat up, they're reaching out for help. We have to know that. We have to take that vested entry, interest. And I don't know what's the authority, but when I sit down with a department head, I tell them, what are your, what is your biggest concern when it comes to safety? Do we have enough manpower? If you look at a, if I got 160 lift, lift station, what's the manpower I need to cover all of those effectively? What's the manpower I need to do the PMs on them so they don't, they don't break down? And you look at that, you go from item by item, equipment by equipment, how many you have, what is the requirement to keep it running efficiently? And that's not being done. Until you do that, you don't have the correct assessment of where you at as a city. And when everything starts to break down on you, now you're going to have to pay extra money, because now you get, instead of planning it, you're going to have to do it on emergency. And your emergency is not the contractor's emergency. And sometimes, that can be a real problem when you're doing things, because you need it done now, hey, you got to go through, you got to put the paperwork in, and if you want me to jump through hoops, now it's going to cost you extra. So instead of paying 2 million to get it replaced, not because you needed emergency, because- So instead of paying 2 million to get it replaced, not because you needed emergency, because, hey, it's the safety of the citizen, now it's calling you 2.5. And so that's why I'm saying, we want to be due, due diligent. But when I look at some of the roads and some of the potholes that we have, it's, it's time out to keep kicking the can down the road, those things need to be fixed, and they need to be fixed now. And we can't keep putting it off. And when the staff come up here, the department heads come up here. No, because I'm making my assumption, but the, the department heads needs to be able to come and tell you exactly what is the correct manpower they need to do the job efficiently and safely, and safe wise. If they're not relaxed to do that, then you're creating a problem for yourself, and pretty soon it's gonna backfire on you. Pretty soon it's gonna backfire. We're just using the lift statements, lift station as a small token. But you look at some of these storm drains. Now, the one right there, when you come down Jason Dewell, right by Gate 1, I'm gonna send you the pictures, because I took the pictures of it. I came through and it's, the water is standing in the road so high, when I ride through, you know, it just do that splash. So I went and I took a picture because here, ex maintenance, I go and take the picture of the storm drain. Just like Dr. O say, coming out, the storm drain is full. You got plenty of area for the water to drain off, but it's full, it's, it's all type of debris there, so it's, it's backing up. And if you just clean that out, it'll flow, it'll flow very easy. But you look at how many storm drains you have and what the manpower you have to go around and clean all those out. So when these department heads come up here, they need to be honest about that. We got a lot of storm drain, and he said he had five people to do that. That's not efficient. And so that's all I'm saying, we have to be honest with where we at. If not, we're not doing the city justice. Thank you.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner.
Well, first, I just want to say one thing before the public. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
When you decided on the millage rate, you turned to Commissioner Smith, you didn't even look at this side. You had the votes from Nesta and Smith, you didn't even bother to look on this side. So I like to kind of, did you hear my vote? No one heard my vote.
We haven't voted yet.
You said you had a motion and a second.
Right. The attorney said I need to have public comment, so I'm having public comment.
Okay. So I appreciate if, if we are kind of considered. Thank you.
Okay. Rod?
Sylvester hit a lot of it, but the aspect of it, I come from an industry that's housing and food service and healthcare. And every piece of equipment we had, we knew the date it was purchased, we knew the lifespan, and we had maintenance schedules. Some of it, like dish machines, daily, weekly, monthly, it had to be maintained. If we don't have those systems in place, we need to have the systems or the people in order to do it. Looking at the police department, if you took a good look at that presentation, you look at response times, increased. Crime, increased. And in my opinion, McKinley is putting a Band-Aid on it, we need to be at 144, maybe even 148 officers. If not, we're gonna be looking at a problem. We could be this place, this place next year, addressing a lost officer like we did this year with a firefighter in order to get staffing. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, close the public hearing, we got a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so passes three to two, does that, we don't, we can't?
No, it's got to be four votes.
Pardon me, it does require four votes.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is one of those situations where you can always go down, it's harder to go back up. And, and, and I, I totally understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Nesta, because there's been a deficiency on what's been presented to us. But, again, we can be the ones that tell them, top-down, you're taking this budget and you're gonna do something better with the department. And that's via employees. Yeah, it's funded from a different thing, but we do have the transferability out of general fund to fund the streets improvement area, if we so choose. We just talked about how we have that need. I just can't look our staff in the face, knowing that the lower-level employees. You know, I, I don't believe every single thing that every single employee tells me, I know that there's, they may think that it's, it's accurate, but there's always more to the story. But at the end of the day, there's a lot still to do. I just use a little anecdote, like, again, I, I think, maybe it was Commissioner Dean or somebody used to always kind of talk about it, but like the median right outside of City Hall here. It's like, like little things like that, that we, we, we have to make sure that we're getting done. The excuse is, we don't have enough resources, because that's been the talk track in these, in these council chambers many a time. We're doing things on the cheap, we're trying to do things, rubbing nickels together, we're trying, we don't have, I wish we had more of the budget to be able to do that thing. How many times have we heard that? And we've got, I, we, we've got to be able to give the resources where they're needed to service our, our residents. And I just, I, you look around the city and I, I can still visually point to a whole bunch of stuff. I didn't do a PowerPoint presentation like I did last year, because that didn't, or two years ago, it didn't hit very well, but I could probably go around and do the same thing. So.
Looking for a motion.
I would need to go to the, go back to what the previous rate was, the 4.2876, like it was prior to our last reduction. And then, again, as the budget nears completion, there's a lot of volatility in the numbers that we've seen thus far. That, that millage can be reduced, if it's appropriate at that time. But I think that there's a lot of uncertainties. Again, going back to even the last three days worth of documentation that we've got, it's been fluid, to say the least, in terms of, you know, how we're looking at all these numbers on a page.
So that, that will generate additional $565,000? And although we do have potential savings far in excess of that, you still want to go with that increase?
Yeah, because I think, again, we have no idea what that salary study is going to look like. Again, if we, if it's a comprehensive salary study that's going to look above, above and beyond just the pay grades, right? If it's going in and really inspecting the longevity pay, hazard pay, all of these other kind of ancillary compensation benefits, as well as benefits, as well as contemplating four by 10 potentially, we have no idea what that looks like. And so.
We know that, what was it?
I think I'm hedging a little bit of, there's still costs that remain, but there's also, you know, there is favorability potential, we just don't know what that looks like yet.
So that, who is it, Winter Park?
Well, let me, okay, if that's the number you're looking for, so 500, 500 additional $1,000, I would say to you then, let's go back to the sanitation. And if you go to actuarially sound rate, that's 600,000, and leave the millage at 4.1876. I mean, if you're looking at just dollars, right now, we, we, we stopped the transfer from sanitation back to general funds to shore up sanitation. You want to make it actuarially sound, we can get there. And we're doing the same thing you're doing, just in a different way.
I just need firm commitment that there is, the staff has the people, like, I always get the impression that when directors get up on that, up to the lectern, they're trying to fit a narrative, top-down, around the budget. And we've got to have firm commitment that there is, these people need to have properly organized staffs to be able to do what they need to get done.
Well, when we, again, when we get our year-end projections a little bit more trued up, and we get the salary study, can we look at additional staff at that time as well? We can always come back and do an amendment and add to the head count.
And I can appreciate what you're doing, Asher, I, I just, I feel like you're trying to convince us or route us a certain way, and really, it's, it's a conversation up here. But, you know, there, there's departments that, you're benefiting from additional staff, right? There's other departments that have spoken up this evening and prior evenings that have talked about, they do need additional staff. That's not contemplated in this budget. So it's not just shoring up sanitation or whatever, there's a few different departments that have talked about their need for staff. And, again, we, we always hear directors coming in during city council meetings and stuff like that saying, oh, we'd like to do that, but we just don't have the resources to be able to do it. Now, not all that is luxury items, that's actual need-based things. Again, can I, can I earmark every single cent if we, if we raise millage? Not at the moment.
So that's, that's my holdup. Right now at 4.1876, I know where the money's going. You want a commitment that you're not going to get.
Which is what?
Your, your staff has gotten up here over the last three days and has indicated that there's unsatisfied needs within their budget.
I would suggest to you, and you can talk to, to the, the directors, if you ask them whether they'd rather have the, the people that we pulled out of their budget or resources to give their current employees additional money, I feel pretty certain that they would say, give each of our employees.
But so play that one out. What if it's not as favorable position as we get to the end of this year, and you've got zero money to do either? I mean, you, you may come in and not, as, things may get to a place where we are flat on the year. And that, that bucket of money that you've, you're, I'm just playing.
You want, I didn't know if you, I wanted to, you know where we stood as of June, so I don't think much is going to change over the next three months.
Just, I'm just, I'm just playing out, because we all, we all don't know with certainty.
I know, but I.
But if you're putting all your eggs into the, let's, let's focus solely on the salary, rightsizing salary for our current employees, and that money doesn't come to fruition?
No, we already got 2.8 set aside. We will have some savings coming out of the general fund.
My point being is 2.8 million dollars may be 5 million dollars off.
It could be.
So that's my point, is what you've allocated thus far may not hit the mark.
Yes, and we know that, and that's, we were anticipating, you know, the use of those savings, just like the fire chief mentioned. I mean, I don't know if I can share, but I think Winter Park, which, which one did a study and they were off, what, about 4 million or something? Am I, am I saying that correct? Okay. So we, we did use that as a measure.
How do we get to 2.8, then?
That's just the residual of what we have.
Whatever we saved over what we started with, we just dumped it in that.
You know, considering some of the things that have been brought to our attention.
And if we, and if we only go up 0.1 mil, we're not going to come up with 4 million dollars. And so that, that's where I'm having problems, if we don't know what we're going to do with additional funding, and we're balanced now. And I asked earlier if we had the money when the salary survey came back to be able to meet that salary survey, and they said it was there.
We had some, we said we may need to use some of those savings.
Right.
Anticipated savings, let me please sit here.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only way I would acquiesce is, we get both of the positions that Chief Wyllam committed to his staff that have been struck. So not only the training captain, but we get the, the safety lieutenant.
And that was it, sorry, yes.
The ADA position, as well as somebody for the, whatever department, stormwater, checking drains.
Another street position? Or was it streets?
Separate, it's its own fund. And you need to raise the rate on the storm.
Was it the stormwater or the streets one, the stormwater? That's where, yeah, it is.
You can transfer money out of general fund for that purpose.
I got it. So those three positions?
If we can make those commitments, then, you know.
He's just saying three additional positions. Maybe 300K, I'm just rounding.
That would be the impact.
Yeah, 300,000.
It's not that, these are needed positions, we just said that we are reactive when it comes to stormwater. Like, if we can alleviate that by having, and again, it doesn't, that's, well, one FTE allocation, how that's divvied up and how that's spent, I'll leave that up to the director. But I want to give that commitment to making sure that that stuff gets done on a more proactive basis, or as proactive as possible. Because everybody kind of collectively got up here and said, had the same reaction when we said, but we're totally reactive on that front.
The additional file position, I want to make sure, go ahead.
If we're gonna do, I mean, I, we can do what we want to do, I mean, if we're gonna do that, you might as well just raise the storm rate, stormwater rate up to, to cover that position. I mean, we, which we've got, we've got the, Chuck, we've got the ability to go. Huh?
It was set.
We set the max, we didn't.
We did.
Right.
And then.
It's the five, it's a five-year.
Step up. It's a five-year step up.
Oh, we had the ability to go above the step up.
No.
We don't have that ability to wait. So, again, that resource is not a high-cost resource. So, you know.
Three positions, I got it.
And what three of those again?
The addition of that safety lieutenant, the ADA position that we had talked about, and the stormwater.
Stormwater position, got it.
Okay, all right, got that commitment. All right, so we go back. We've got a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Nesta to move the set, the proposed operating millage rate for the 2023 tax year at 4.1876 mills. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries down.
We got two other motions.
Okay, the tentative millage rate is 4.1876, which represents a 13.21% increase over the rollback rate of 3.6991. The final budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
No, I thought you have to, you have to make.
There were two of them, September 6.
You have to make the motion and get those, they have to be three separate motions, is what the attorney told us.
Yes, yes, and, and do need to take, since there are separate propositions, we'll need to take public comment on each one.
Okay, so, all right, so we got a motion to set the tentative millage rate at 4.1876, which represents 13.21% increase over the rollback rate. Do you have a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, a second by Commissioner Smith. Now we got public comment, no public comment, all those in favor?
Wait, we got one, we got one.
What are the two meeting?
You got to do them separately, I guess.
No, but the first one of the.
The first one was the millage rate, then we're doing the dates.
And, Commissioner, you just set that rate, I think what's left to do is to set the rollback millage rate as well as the time and date for the hearing. But you do have a new motion, so it would be prudent to take public comment on the, on the rate that you're setting now. So you still have three things to do, essentially.
Okay.
This is real quick, just listened to Chief McKinley, when he talked about the training and the range, how they're outside shooting, practicing, and you hear neighbors hearing the gunfire. That's something that we need to address kind of like ASAP, because that's, when you look at it, and you look at, we're in the 21st century, the technology for the training and for the range, that should really be an inside facility. And so that, if you guys can look at that, add that into the budget, because here again, we're talking about safety, safety is paramount. I know Chief do a tight ship over there, but when you got an outside range, anything could happen. So that's one that we need to really look at and put that in the budget and try to get that done ASAP, because that's way behind the time.
All right, so, come back to me, Andrew, so.
So, Commissioner, let me explain what happened here, you had the original motion to set it 4.1876, and that motion failed. And then you had a second motion to reset it 4.1876 with the adjustment to the positions. But public comment was not taken on that, so now you've had public comment, because that motion was made again.
Okay.
So that's where we're at on that particular motion, and then you just have, once this is dealt with and disposed of, then you just have the other two, each of those two need public comment as well.
Now we need to vote on.
Okay, okay, move, I've got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, a second by Commissioner Smith to move to set the proposed operating millage. Smith, to move to set the proposed operating millage rate for the 2023 tax year at 4.1876. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, need a motion to set the tentative millage rate of 4.1876, which represents a 13.21% increase over the rollback millage rate.
I still think, is that still right or no?
That's, that's been done, it's.
Now we just need a date.
Go to the next one, I, I'll read it. Move to set the rollback millage rate for the 2023 tax rate at the 3.6691.
So we need a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
I'm sorry, what are we doing with that second motion? Explain that to me.
Set the rollback rate.
It's the rollback rate, that is associated with that, that should have been the first thing. So, and then the second thing is the proposed millage rate that you've already done.
So we're basically taking a motion to state the obvious. We're confirming arithmetic.
Essentially, yes, it's.
Following legal advice.
Because you're, you're certifying the, the form that, the numbers in the form, so logically, it does make sense to, you know, set that rollback back millage rate first, but it's predicated on what you're setting, so it's, it's fine.
Okay, so we got, we have a motion.
It's a requirement.
So moved, got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith, to move the set, to set the rollback rate, millage rate for 2023 tax year at 3.6691. Anybody in the public who wishes to speak? Close the public hearing, look for, we got a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Last one, the final budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
And the tentative budget hearing is scheduled for September 6th at 5:15 in the city council chambers.
Do we need a motion on, motion and a second on that one?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you do.
Motion and a second?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
How come he keeps going that way? What's wrong with me and Commissioner Becker?
You want to make a second?
Yeah.
Okay, second by Commissioner Blaskin, all those in favor?
You just gotta speak up, yell, we gotta get.
No, no, no.
Public comment, public comment.
He seems to go in that direction, I'm like, what, what are we, chopped liver on this end?
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you all.
Me too.